Hello, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the town of Rockingham, Villas-Bellis Falls special joint board meeting. It's Tuesday, October 20th, time is 5:30. We're located in the lower theater. And there's a link for the Zoom meeting if you want to join in that way. I'd like to call the meeting to order. So we do not have anyone here in manager role at this time. Are there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matter and/or pressing matter that will require ratification at future meetings?
I have one thing that we're not going to add to the meeting, but I just want to bring it up because we're at a joint meeting. Today I received from Michael Moheski at, I believe, Buildings and Grounds up in the state of Vermont, information about the automated vehicle testing permit, and they would like us to have, to speak together about the consideration at a future joint board meeting. I'm not sure when our next one is. But something for us to observe. I don't know if everyone got this material, but we'll have time to go over it until then because I'm not sure when the next one is. But just talking about the automated vehicle testing because the village was interested and the town owns the roads. So that's for upcoming. I'll make sure to get this to whoever is handling our upcoming needs, Shannon, and our future executive system. Thank you.
Anything else? Public comments on items that are not on the agenda for the joint board meeting. You have three minutes. I do not see any hands on that thing. Moving right along. Our agenda tonight is an executive session to discuss real estate, entertain a motion for that. We need to.
Yeah. Somebody up for two seconds. That is, if the one on contracts, we pass the people. I don't know what happened with the green ones. Yeah, it gets up there.
Real estate. Yeah, no, there's something to say.
Real estate, yeah.
This chairman, I have a move that we go into executive session for the sort of purpose of negotiating or securing real estate purchase or office. No, it's not the right one. Contracts, maybe? Contracts, yeah, discuss contracts. Wait a minute. You have a second?
Most men made and seconded going. If you want to invite, we need to invite Ray, Pat.
Attorney.
Ray and Pat.
And Scott, should he show up?
Yeah, Scott, yeah.
The manager.
With that amendment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, Stefan wants to read it for the village.
Well, it doesn't matter. Make the motion that we enter into an executive session to discuss contractual matters which are treating all of my place to municipality, the village, are you at a substantial disadvantage?
He has a second?
Question.
Okay. And to invite Tannen Kuda, Ray Masuko, and Scott Pickup if he should show up here. Of all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're now in the executive session.
Agenda items for next meeting, so we have automated vehicle testing discussion. I saw him come to your meeting once or twice.
Yeah, and I'm going to send it to, yeah, I'll send it to them.
Anything else? That may be sooner than later, so we might push that to a different meeting.
That's fine.
If we have another meeting.
I still have to go on to the agenda.
Other business? Everyone's good? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
This motion, meeting is adjourned. We will be starting our regular select board meeting in about three minutes. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Rockingham Select Board Regular Meeting. It's Tuesday, October 20th. Time is 6:23. We are located in the lower theater at Town Hall, and there's a Zoom link available for those who wish to attend that way. Like to call the meeting to order. Are there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and/or pressing that will require ratification at a future meeting? None? Chuck, Scott? Good. It says here, approved minutes of October 6th. You get it?
They were on the website. You had to get them off there.
I didn't get them off there. How do they look? Entertained a motion?
I didn't see them.
They were on the website, so they're on the website if you need to get them.
Motion's been made. Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve minutes. Peter read them. I trust his. Made and seconded to approve minutes, October 6th. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
We have any public comments that are not on the agenda? Get three minutes per person.
I'm here to stick the agenda item number three.
Okay. Anyone in, anyone out there, Shannon? I don't know if they have hands up or whatever. Internet lane.
Point of order, do you have the?
I don't, I don't see anybody.
There's a new agenda with one Center Street on there on the top of the.
Oh, yeah.
That's what Chuck's here for, I assume. And.
It was on the website.
Yeah, it was.
I didn't know until I looked myself, so.
I had the old one. So we can just go back to that one, I guess.
Do the managers' call if you'd like, and then come back to the numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
Do what? I never got that agenda, no. Nor did I think we were discussing it because I was told we weren't. What do you want to do?
You can just leave it off. Go ahead and leave it off.
We can, we can open it.
Yeah, no, you can, you can do it. Just, just bump that down to, down to one and then two, three, four. That's all.
It's strictly informational, Gaetano, so we can have it or not?
Yeah, I'll put it at item number one if it's informational. We're not acting as the Board of Health. It's two separate boards here. I've opened the Rockingham Select Board meeting. That item is not on this agenda. We could add it as discussion.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
You have to go by what agenda was posted. If one's on the website, but one got posted in the offices, you have to go use one.
That I can help with.
If it's posted in three places, and if that one doesn't get changed, but the one on the website does, you have to go by the one that's been posted in the front.
The one that's posted is the one I have in front of me, which is on the little bump out thing, which is the one I started reading off of. I'm going to continue on with that one, which is the one that's posted out front and the one I have. So we're on public comments. Is there anyone in Zoom, Shannon, that you can see that has a hand up?
No.
Okay, thank you. Managers' report, and for those just tuning in, this is our first Rockingham Select Board, and we have our new manager started yesterday. Scott Pickup. I don't know if he has a report at this time, if you want to say anything at this time or.
Just basically been meeting with department heads, and we'll have some updates for you on some pending items and some things we want, some comment from village and, and from town. So, so far, so good. And we'll certainly try to figure out some of the issues on this agenda, which I apologize for if there was some confusion.
That's okay. It happens. Thank you and welcome. Okay, moving on to the agenda. Item one, errors, omissions, and additions, and the listers. I see Camilla is here.
Yes.
You have some paperwork on that, or we've all seen it?
I'd like to address that in that your paperwork needs a correction.
Okay.
This is, there are two items on it, and the column relating to the town of Rockingham is all correct. The column relating to the Bellis Falls Village, I made a mistake preparing this document by forgetting to translate the value dollars into the abbreviated, the grand list dollars. So, the net change to the grand list is 35.83 by moving the decimal point. I know you guys are familiar with this maneuver that has to be, to remember to do this all the time, and occasionally I forget. So that should be 35.83, following that down on the second error that, and the omission that we're correcting for the Bellis Falls Village, same thing, 35.83. And the resulting, at the bottom, grand list figure is a grand list value of 266271.35. Do you all understand what I have had to correct here? Or are there any questions about that?
It's me when you said it was village.
Just in the village. The, the, the personal property for Vermont Transco was already listed in the village at a value that was taken over from last year's value. And we were instructed by property valuation and review that the equipment value they declare should be split off and applied under personal property, and the, that they own a tiny bit of land up on Osgood Road worth, on our, our books, only a thousand bucks. So, this is the result of correcting it according to property valuation and review's instructions. Are there any other, any questions I can answer on this?
Camilla, the form that we have that you've signed, do you want to resubmit the form then? Because right now we have one that you signed October 13th, which shows the original numbers, not the revised numbers.
Here's my, well, you could, I'll, I'll take the cue from the board. We can certainly re-submit it with our signatures, and the Select Board could sign it at their, you know, convenience if they approve the numbers I've just changed. You could write, handwrite the changes with the minutes that I've made these corrections with our signatures. I'm not sure what would, what would feel the most appropriate to the board. And I apologize for having just noticed this.
Is it timed? Can it get corrected and we could edit, enter it correctly rather than handwriting?
The only thing is I'm trying to get this done so that they can have a corrected bill for their November 10th payment. But this is October 20th, and I believe you folks are meeting again before the November 10th.
Yes.
So if you'd like, we can, we can resubmit it for the next meeting if you would prefer it that way.
Okay, well, that was the board's pleasure. Anybody object?
I would too, because evidently you don't have a copy of the sheet.
I do.
Would you have this?
I've seen it. I, it didn't.
Okay, because it was attached to the.
But I don't have the corrections. I didn't.
Yeah, no, right. I think, I think I agree with you. Let's, let's reset it.
That's okay. That sounds good. Camilla, you want to go with that?
All right. All right, we'll redo it, and we'll send it to you for the next meeting. I mean, you know, since you now understand what, what it's about, we'll just simply resubmit it.
Great. We'll see you in early November.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Very much. Anything else on that at this time? I don't believe so. Number two, we're going to get an update, Town Hall damage from the incident with the 79-cent plumbing fixture. Mr. Wise here?
Thank you. If, if it's okay, I'll take off the mask. So we had water damage from the third floor. It started up on the third floor, worked its way around the second floor, causing no damage. Daylighting on the first floor causing damage in the stairwell slash supply closet, if you will, for the opera house, causing damage to the plaster there, and then eventually working its way down to the basement. Surf Pro came in for a weekend, basically turned everything on high in terms of airflow to dry everything out. Don't have. Either the mic or me is not doing so well. I don't know which one. Usually it's me.
I'm not qualified to talk about the mic.
Okay, understood. So, right now, we're working with the league passive to get an insurance claim, and that's in production. We don't have a, a quote from Surf Pro, but that work was done, and they're billing us shortly. It appears to be under the threshold that we need for an appraisal and all that stuff. So we're going to get some estimates as to what it will cost to repair that damage on the first floor, and it'll probably just pay out. We also requested, to Gaetano's point, we put these cheap residential water lines, the main, the feed to the tank, they're plastic. That's, it's not something you typically see in a commercial application, but we went and did that. So I did request Tony James Plumbing to go through and audit all these toilets because it's not a matter of if, it's just when those things break, they can cause a ton of damage. And yes, to Gaetano's point, it's about $2 difference. This is a $3 to $5 part. We went with the $3 one. We paid a price for that.
So did you say, so it is going to be an insurance claim?
That's, yeah, that's my, yes.
We don't know the bill from Surf Pro.
Do not know. And I checked with the league. As of today, we haven't received anything.
Yes, it's an insurance claim, so we have $1,000 deductible. We have not seen any bills Surf Pro directly billed our insurance company.
Oh. No deductible? I'm sorry, I was thinking about something else. Was there a deductible?
It's $1,000.
And then just for the record, Don found the problem, right?
Yes.
Don Hashem, the floor, our, one of our maintenance, and contacted Andy and Chief McGinnis, who responded rapidly and cleaned up the bulk of it.
Yeah, if there's a hero in this story, it's Don Hashem, coming very early. It's kind of atypical, but he does come extremely early, and he noticed the problem immediately, called it in. So it could have been far worse.
Is there a shut-off by that unit? Or did the water shut off to the thing? Or how long did it take to shut the water off? From my knowledge?
Yes, the shut-off on the same plastic water feed that we talked about, the shut-off had seized, they had to go find another shut-off to the entire bathroom. So that's going to be part of the service when they're replacing all those, is to check the shut-offs.
Any other questions? Susan, anything?
I'm just curious, did they ever determine?
You're not on mic.
No, I'm all set, thanks.
Or he could use that one.
I'm curious if there was any estimate, like, on how long the water had been leaking before, you know, how many hours or?
I think it's hard to tell, but it was.
I don't know. Several hours, probably.
Several hours is our guesstimate, but that is just a guess.
Although, really don't know the answer to that question, but once it was noticed, it was dealt with, you know? Because it, yep. Anything else on that matter? You, you might miss it, Shannon? Thank you. And, thank you, Chuck. And thank you, Shannon, and thank everyone who helped to resolve that issue. Now we have number three, update, update on the recycling center.
I can start with that. This is a moving target. Josh Kemp, because of family responsibilities, is no longer able to serve as an interim manager for the recycle center. I'd like to thank Josh and acknowledgement of his hard work in really transforming that center and addressing a lot of the code violations. But one of the responsibilities that I turned over to the new manager is to find a, a long-term replacement and to have that basically staffed. Right now, it runs itself. We have a member of the highway department there on Saturday for traffic control. As you know, it's a big, big concern of ours to make sure that we move cars during those peak periods to get them off of US Route 5. I was there on Saturday. It was pretty, it was, it was running very well. So, long-term, need a manager. That manager, Peter, should look at some of the rates that you've offered and changes to that effect, and that's something the Select Board can address on a future date. But right now, the recycle center is in transition.
And the Mondays started? When do the Mondays start? And have we gotten the word out?
The word is getting out, the Mondays. Originally, there was miscommunication on whether or not that was going forward. It turns out that the people are figuring it out very quickly, and the numbers are increasing.
The recycling center is open on Mondays. Right now, moving forward.
That's right.
Saturday, Monday, and Wednesday. We've added Monday for those at home or anyone listening who hasn't heard. That's it.
Also, the, the manager looks for a new permanent manager. Is he going to be also a representative to the district? Because right now, we don't have anybody advocating for Rockingham. And that was part of the past manager's position. It was included in this pay, and pay many extra. You and I talked about that, because I think there's a meeting on the 22nd of the district.
That's right. It would have been Josh potentially, but, and then there was a question whether or not a member of the Select Board wanted to take on that position. So that's an outstanding question right now.
What's the role, what's, what's the organization?
It's a solid waste management district. Each town has a representative.
And me? I annually?
Seasonally, I want to say.
Don't they drink quarterly or at least twice a year or something like that?
All right.
I don't know the background.
They met Josh. They wanted not only him on the board, but on the executive committee. They were pretty excited about him. So that had been the direction we were going in.
Okay. Any, any questions? From anyone right now on the recycling center? If not, thank everyone. Thank you, Josh, for all your hard work, and, and everyone who helps down there.
You're not on mic. There's a microphone at that small table.
Just state your name for the record. Thank you.
Let's turn that microphone on also by hitting the button in the face. There you go.
I'm Laurel Green. I'm the chair of Sustainable Rockingham, which was one of the task forces set up at the community visits that we had less than a year ago. And I just had a question about how the food waste program, collection program is going. I know that it's been happening for about three months, and really curious to get some feedback on how that is. Can, can anybody give me a status report on that?
I kind of could, but I'm nowhere near qualified for it. I, I do feel like it's picked up recently, but.
Yes.
Chuck or Peter would probably have a better, all of a sudden, it seems to be.
Yeah, I'm surprised at how successful it is, Peter. You can add to it. I think it's really, now that it's compulsory, it's, it's changed people's mind. Those totes had been rather neglected for a long time, and it was just a, sort of something that looked good, but we weren't using it. But people are now using it, yes.
Great, great. Really glad to hear it. I, you know, one of the things in the vision that, the vision statement that came out of the community visits was that we'll consider climate change in all the decisions that we make in the town. That's a visionary statement. But collecting food waste and, and seeing that it gets composted instead of being just put in landfill is really a key piece that we can do here locally to help with global climate, reversing global climate warming. So I just wanted to, to say that, since I saw it on the, the recycling center on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You got a thumbs up there. Oh, all right. So, thanks again. Thanks, Josh. Thank, thank Chuck. Thank Peter. Thank everyone who's helping out, keeping it safe and functional down there, and the, and the highway guys. Okay, my kind of meeting. So we could, do you want to give an update on Center Street? I could put it in other business. This is what's on my agenda here. So I'm going to go next is review agenda items for our next meeting.
November 3rd.
November 3rd.
November 3rd, and we already need to have listers on there, right?
Right, we'll have the updated sheet.
And nothing else at this time, probably?
There'll be your today's financials, Gaetano.
Okay. Yes, sir. You need a microphone, sir. I know, I'm sorry, Gary.
Yes, so there is designating Scott Pickup as the municipal authorizing official for the block grant, and there'll be about four PM fours which add Scott Pickup to existing block grant projects.
And that'll be on November 3rd?
Yes, please.
You'll have all that prepared?
Yes, I will, yeah. You'll have that ahead of time with the packet.
And if anyone thinks of anything else, review agenda items for joint board, which we just had a joint board. You have something, Peter?
No, I just want to know, how do we get a poll? Does the BF manager go to you, Scott, or on, on the RockBF?
As of, yes, Monday.
I wouldn't sure how, if we have something that we need, you know, that I know before we had a cell number that we could get ahold of. They issued that out.
Send that out, too. I've got a new.
Yeah, it's no big deal. I just want to know if something comes up that we, where, you know, where does it go? That's all.
So if you guys want to get in touch with the manager currently, you can use the manager at rockbf.org. That goes right to Scott. And you can also use the extension, so 802-463-3964, extension 1104, that has always been the manager, and that will go directly to Scott.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So agenda items for the joint board meeting, which here says December 29th, which seems accurate to put, we need to discuss the automated vehicle testing as a joint board. That's all we have for that meeting that I can think of. Because they came and spoke with the village, but in fact, the town owns the roads. We need to be included in that discussion. Anything else right now? It's a ways away. Review and approve orders, bills, and warrants?
Do we have any?
Vehicle, I haven't seen any. Testing.
Scott, did you bring those folders down?
No, I'll grab them. Just the bills.
I think they, they emailed us something, but I looked at that, but I don't, we haven't got anything here to sign.
All right, we're getting settled in. So other business. Susan.
I'm all set for right now, thank you.
Ben?
Hyde Hill, when is that? I saw the pipes down there. When is that planning on getting started?
I saw the pipe too, almost.
That's imminent.
I had a resident ask.
Andy had said you weren't here, I think. And the update Andy gave was time.
We're still expecting a fall project, but we won't have time to pave. We'll basically lay the base, light it compact for the winter, but it's a, it's this season, so it's happening. So it's within the next week or two.
Yeah. No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure it was going to be soon.
Okay.
Before frost.
Contracting got real busy, like, a lot of people, and just it's been, that was, Andy gave that update.
Thank you.
Anything else? Peter?
Just the update on one center. But whatever he wants to bring that up.
I'll go, let's get through other business, and I'll give Chuck other business opportunity. Stefan?
Nope, just other than, it was great that Don was here and noticed that, and just goes to show you that all heroes work case.
Thank you. So I'd like to just take this moment to thank Chuck Wise for his, for his job that he did here publicly. I don't, I don't know as we've said that, so I'll say it here. Six or seven months worth, I think he took 16% of what someone normally gets paid to do that position, and I'd like to thank.
Thank you very much. You got a thumbs up there, oh, all right, so, thanks again, thanks Josh, thank, thank Chuck, thank Peter, thank everyone who's helping out, keeping it safe and functional down there, and, and the highway guys. Okay, my kind of meeting, so, we could, do you want to give an update on Center Street, and I could put it in other business, this is what's on my agenda here, so I'm going to go, next is review agenda items for our next meeting.
November 3rd.
November 3rd.
November 3rd, and we already need to have listers on there, right?
Right, we'll have the updated sheet.
And, nothing else at this time, probably...
There'll be year-to-date financials, Gaetano.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Need a microphone, sir.
I know, I'm sorry, Gary.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so, there is designating Scott Pickup as the municipal authorizing official for the block grant, and there'll be about four PM fours, which add Scott Pickup to existing block grant projects.
And that'll be on November 3rd?
Yes, please.
You'll have all that prepared?
Yes, I will, yeah.
Thank you.
You'll have that ahead of time with the packet.
And, if anyone thinks of anything else, review agenda items for Joint Board, which we just had a Joint Board, you have something, Peter?
No, I just want to know, how do we get a poll, is the BF manager, go to you Scott, or, on, on the Rock BF?
As of, yes, Monday.
I wouldn't sure how we, if we have something that we need, you know, that, I know before we had a cell number that we could get ahold of, they issued that out.
Send that out, too, I've got a new...
Yeah, it's no big deal, I just want to know, if something comes up that we...
Right.
Where, you know, where does it go? That's awesome.
So if you guys want to get in touch with the manager currently, you can use the manager at rockbf.org, that goes right to Scott, and you can also use the extension, so, eight oh two four six three three nine six four, extension one one oh four, that has always been the manager, and that will go directly to Scott.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, agenda items for the Joint Board meeting, which here says December 29th, which seems accurate to put, we need to discuss the automated vehicle testing as a Joint Board, that's all we have for that meeting that I can think of, because they came and spoke with the village, but in fact, the town owns the roads, we need to be included in that discussion. Anything else right now, it's a ways away? Review and approve orders, bills, and warrants?
Do we have any?
Vehicle, I haven't seen any. Testing...
Scott, did you bring those folders down?
No, I'll grab them. Just the bills.
I think they, they emailed us something, but I looked it up, but I don't, we haven't got anything here to sign.
All right, we're getting settled in. So, other business.
Yeah.
Susan.
I'm all set for right now, thank you.
Ben?
Hyde Hill, when is that? I saw all the pipes down there. When is that planning on getting started?
I saw the pipe too, almost...
That's imminent.
I had a resident ask.
Andy had said, you weren't here, I think, and the update Andy gave was, time...
We're still expecting a fall project, but we won't have time to pave, we'll basically lay the base, light it compact for the winter, but it's a, it's this season, so it's happening. So it's within the next week or two.
Yeah. No, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure it was going to be soon.
Okay.
Before frost.
Contracting got real busy, like, a lot of people, and just, it's been, that was Andy gave that update.
Thank you.
Anything else? Peter?
Just the update on One Center, but, whoever he wants to bring it out.
I'll go, let's get through other business, and I'll give Chuck other business opportunity. Stefan?
Nope, just other than, it was great that Don was here and noticed that, and just goes to show you that all heroes work case.
Thank you.
Cool.
So I, I'd like to just take this moment to thank Chuck Wise for his, for his job that he did here, publicly, I don't, I don't know if we've said that, so I'll say it here, six or seven months worth, I think he took sixteen percent of what someone normally gets paid to do that position, and I'd like to thank him for his getting involved with, from meeting the staff members, to being hands-on with them, to really caring about what goes on around here, and I'd just like to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I had a bouquet of flowers, I'd give it to you, but I don't.
And I'd sock you.
Thanks again, Chuck. Oh, and Halloween, for those that didn't hear, it is going on in the village here, there's information listed on the Fire Department page, Facebook page, PD Facebook page, and the town website about some safety precautions and, and ways to stay safe through that event. In the village, it is a go as far as trick-or-treating, the Fire Department will not be hosting their haunted house because of the conditions we're in, there may be some firefighters hanging around in costume, scaring passerbyers, have to wait and see, but there's information on the website and some Facebook pages about trick-or-treating in the village of Bellas Falls. Not sure about Saxton's or, 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 or. That's it from me, and here we have some orders, bills, and warrants.
Move to approve.
There you go, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Hi.
We do not, we do not need an executive session to make an, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Other business, One Center.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Chuck, your turn for other business.
I'm going to keep One Center, is, if I can, on this Select Board's agenda, this is a moving target, the rat infestation in that neighborhood is getting worse, we have a, an outstanding legal question that we're trying to work with the Department of Health, the Department of Health doesn't know, but this issue of who is qualified to serve a notice, we have a citation that says, served by a sheriff, deputy sheriff, constable, or other person authorized by law, and we're trying to work that out right now, that's, that's not actually an easy question to answer, believe it or not. As you all know, we don't have a constable, that's a difficult position to fill, and so that leaves us with the Sheriff's Department, which historically, we've had challenges having them try to find people and serve people, and you still get the eight hundred thousand dollar bills, been there, done that, and don't want the T-shirt again. So we're going to try to figure out a local way to deal with this, we have to build the infrastructure anyways, as you know, we've been leaning more aggressively on rental housing and general housing violations, but quite frankly, we've never gotten to this point, usually voluntary compliance solves the problem. So this is an undiscovered country for a lot of us, I will say that thankfully, I can count on the joint cooperation now of Scott Pickup, but as well as Chief McGinnis and Chief David Bemus. Are there any questions regarding One Center Street? If there's any changes that we have to alter the health order so that the language reads a certain way, we will re-approach this board in November with that updated language.
That was my question, it's going to come back in November.
Yeah, as long as we're in the public eye, and they understand scrutiny is being paid, then I'm doing my job, and that's, there's no problem coming back for an amended health order. The overall goal is compliance, just cleaning up.
I'm, I'm Mr. Chairman, since the topic came up, we have the Bellas Falls Police Chief Adak, that is, or was appointed by the Board as the first constable, probably we'll have to give consideration and see if he's interested, or explore that avenue, the police chief, Dave Bemus, is the appointed constable for the county of Rockingham, first constable.
We have explored that, again, we had to learn that Chief Bemus cannot be, as a resident of Athens, there was a, yeah, and then we even, we weren't even sure if Chief Lake still retained his constable position, so we had to reach out to him to see if he still had it, because when he resigned as Chief of Police, it wasn't clear that he resigned as constable either.
Wendy has gone over that.
Chief Lake confirmed that he had resigned from both positions.
Okay, so, we're good, and we'll look forward to any new updates and keep us posted, and thanks again for that, for that project. Okay? We'll talk about it in November, if anything changes. Okay, so that's it, other business, somebody made a motion and seconded to adjourn, right?
He made a motion, I'll select.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, good night, everyone.